All right, let's bring the Dune City Council regular meeting of November 14th, 2018 to order, please. Roll call, please.
Mayor Forsen.
Here.
Council President Sheldon Meyer.
Burison.
Councilor Susan Stone.
Here.
Councilor Duke Wells.
Here.
Councilor Tom Allen.
Here.
Councilor Robert Orr.
Here.
And for the record, Councilor Alan Montgomery is absent and excused.
Thank you. Would you all please turn to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? I am opposed. Hearing none, consent agenda is approved. Announcements, correspondents, Jamie?
There is a blue-green algae bloom occurring on Silkus Lake. Water testing by the Oregon Health Authority determined levels of the bacteria to pose a possible threat to vulnerable populations such as children under five, the elderly, pregnant women, and individuals with immune deficiency disorders. Testing will continue until the results reveal non-threatening levels. It is being tested at the intake of South Coast Water District, who up until last Friday was still taking water out of Silkus Lake. They have now changed over to GoAHA, but I received assurance from the state that they will continue testing in that area for the blue-green until it comes back with an all-clear. If you wish to be added to the list of individuals who are receiving updates through email, please email me at City Hall or come by and drop off your email address and I'll be sure to add you to the list. Thankfully, it doesn't appear to be getting any more. Secondly, the preliminary results of the November 6th election suggest that all four candidates have been re-elected to the positions for which they ran. The question regarding the ban of marijuana businesses passed. The question to amend the charter to change provisions relating to municipal court failed. And the question regarding assessments of the five-year half-cent ad-halaurum tax also failed. Election results will not be final until certified on or before November 26th, 2018. Sanduans Frontier received the coveted 2018 Eugene Cascades and Coast Destination Award from Traveling County earlier this year. The plaque, however, was destroyed when the historic building burned down recently in September. A replacement plaque was presented to Sanduans Frontier during the October 31st Traveling County Meeting of Commerce. We'd like to congratulate Sanduans Frontier for winning the award and surviving the fire. City Hall will be closed at noon on November 21st and will reopen on Monday, November 26th. And we will be closed from Monday, December 24th and will reopen on Tuesday, January 2nd. The City Council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on a conditional use permit for boundary line adjustment at the December regular session. Councilors are asked to ensure their attendance at that meeting to keep cost of the city at a minimum. In this case, it will require pre-publication and Measure 56 notice, so we do have to put out a lot of money to get the notices out. And we ask that to try and get a quorum so that we can have that meeting, not have to continue it and redo everything. And lastly, not on the list, I recently found out, for those people who know Donna Randall and Lou Inverness, who live on Park Drive Drive during the summer, the rest of the year, they live in paradise and they have lost everything. But they're okay. They're okay, they got up. That's it.
Citizens input, do we have anybody that has signed up to speak to items that are not on the agenda?
And I don't know their identity, that's why I always sign up.
Thank you. Fred?
Good evening, Mayor.
I guess it's Fred Hilton, I guess.
Yeah, I know you mean Fred, so I forgot your name. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Good evening, City Councilors. Hope you're all having a great day. So, I'm here tonight largely because I see that there's an agenda item to discuss the future of Dune City. And I have, being a resident and business owner not only in Dune City, but having a business in Florence, Dune City means a great deal to me. I know I've only got three minutes, I really didn't prepare anything tonight, so I'll make it quick. The long and short of it is, nine years ago, I took a job for the city to get health benefits. A year later, I ended up accepting an appointment in 2010 as the city recorder for the city. Huge responsibility, as Mrs. Mills knows. A whole lot of work and very little money and very few accolades other than from the gracious council and wonderful people that we have living here in Dune City. In any case, I took that job as a city recorder, later to become the city administrator, for one reason and one reason only, and that was to save the city. At that time, the city was largely upside-down every year to the tune of about $100,000 annually that was going out in legal expense. The city was hemorrhaging money over some poor decisions, in my opinion, that were made by the seated city council at that time over land use issues and land use development. Then, not very popular, Eric Heltman, the mayor, made a decision to get that stuff off the table and settle the land use issues. And I'm pleased to say that that's all behind us at this point. In 2011, I gave the city its first real balanced budget. And later, in 2012, gave the city its first-ever, that I'm aware of, clean audit. So, I know that this city can be around on the revenues that are available. I also know that a property tax levy did not pass at the recent election. And for that, I'm kind of grateful, because I am a property owner here in Dune City. And while I'm happy to discuss the issue of whether or not Dune City should continue to exist anywhere, anytime, with anybody, that's not for discussion at this moment. But I, for one, would be very, very, very disappointed if the city chose to dissolve itself and go away. I don't think any of us want to be under the rule of only Land County. And that's nothing against Land County, it's just the city administration provides a level of sensibility to property ownership that's not available outside city limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Rory?
Well, it's on the agenda, but I'm going to speak about the same thing that the previous guy spoke on.
Okay.
I worry him, I live at 4910, a garden in Blue, where my post office thought was better. One thing, when you're considering dis-incorporating, there's lots of things that you probably aren't thinking about, and that bothers me. On the ballot, the marijuana thing passed. What happens with that ordinance? People want their community to not have that. Building codes, we want local control on building codes, we fight about that all that. What happens if that happens? Roads right-of-way, what happens to those things? But one of the most important things for me is the water rights. The city has lots of water rights that are used and take care of. What happens to those? Do you sell them, or can you sell them? How do you transfer them? Those are all issues. In regards to the property tax, since I'm the one who proposed the amendment on the Budget Committee, and I heard he was not happy to hear that, well, it was less than, I don't know, it was costing me a buck, $2, and just so we could have money to help sustain that. So, we failed in telling people what it was really about. And part of that ballot, there were some misconceptions about the 3% or 5% increase, which is required by law, or something, it couldn't go that. So, we did a poor job of telling them or explaining it. But on the other hand, only a third of the people voted for it. But I'm concerned about, I mean, certainly, it was a punch in the face or the gut for some of you, but we do provide value, we just have to figure out how to do it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Bonnie Allen?
I'm Bonnie. No, we don't have Bonnie. I'm Bonnie Allen, I'm a resident of Dune City, and I'm also chairman of the Planning Commission. And in my seven years here, I've had the pleasure of working in what I call democracy in action, where you take the citizenry of this small city and we work on the things that are most important to us. I've worked on water testing, water quality, and writing local rules that reflect our use of our property. Nevertheless, this is a city that has no tax base, there's no tax assessment from the residents to support this city government. The state does not give us any break when it requires us to do things. They don't say, "You're a teeny tiny town that doesn't get any money, you can do the shortcut way." They say, "No, you have to do it the same way as Portland or Bend." What I ask is for this city to make a decision. Do you want local government? Do you want to see your values reflected in the rules? If so, you have to pay for it. A city that the citizenry contributes nothing to, gives no money to, is going to deserve exactly what it gets.
Thank you, Bonnie. All right, is that it? That's all I have. New business. A discussion on the options available to the city for disincorporation is a result of voters denying the one and a half cent per 1,000 value temporary tax. That issue was brought up with some months ago regarding what the law is about shared tax revenues from the state and finding out that the law states that, the way the law reads, and Ross is here as our representative, our legal representative, read to us in our Budget Committee, what the state revenue sharing is a law ordinance, whichever across the ORS?
Yeah, statute.
Statute. The way it reads is that all cities that participate in property taxes give revenue sharing from these taxes throughout the state. Our issue or concern was, as we're not a taxing city, there's about seven or eight small cities in the state of Oregon that do not have property taxes. Were we getting those funds, which total right around $110,000 a year to our budget? Are we legally entitled to those monies? And if we are not, would, you know, once the state discovers that, would we have to then pay any of that back? Would they cut us off? Is it just something that they've been doing to all these cities and given them the money regardless of what the statute says? So, our thing was, let's try to pass a minimal, minimal tax that wouldn't cost anybody much money at all, to try to make sure that we were compliant with that statute. With that taxation not going through, and the voters voted it down, then we're into a situation where, do we wait and see if the state figures it out? Do we alert the state and say, "Can you send us something that says we're not breaking the law?" I mean, there's all sorts of things to ask, but not receiving $110,000 a year in our budget would be extremely significant. So, that's where we sit today. The council has not really sat, we heard from council, we heard from staff on their thoughts on it, and so it's kind of a conversation that the council has to have to determine whether or not and where we go next. Do we just shut up and let it happen? Or do you get into a situation of trying to be prepared to take on something where the budget does not allow for that type of hit? So, that's kind of the discussion at the table, I think, right now, unless you want to, you know, with the information from staff and council, do you want to have a special session on it, executive session on it? Do you want to talk about it here so everybody can hear the different options? Or how do you guys feel about it? Susan, wait a minute.
I think we should have a special session and talk about it and see how the public feels.
Yeah, special sessions is not correct, don't we get to invite the public as well?
I'd like to simply offer that we've had a public discussion, to the extent that some of you were here at the Budget Committee meeting at 5:00. And I think it's, my sense would be, at this point, that no action is needed, that we simply continue to operate as we have. Our attorney has advised us that, I think it's fair to say, in your professional opinion, we're not breaking any laws, and that we are continuing to receive the funds. And at this point, I would suggest that we simply continue to willingly and happily accept the funds and hope that they continue. But I'm not opposed to a special session, I just don't feel that it's necessary.
Okay. I agree. I don't know that a special session's required, although I'd certainly be willing to participate in that. What I rest my opinion on is, our legal counsel, earlier today in the Budget Committee meeting, offered the opinion, I think, that we need to stay of course, collect our money. There are eight other cities just like us who are doing the same thing. To me, it would be obvious to the state that their agreement or their form is not exactly correct. And if we do our own form and they accept that, then we've done nothing wrong. So, at this point, again, going on the advice of council, I think we should continue to receive the funds, not be foolish with our money. And, you know, if they decide that state does something different, then we cross that bridge when it happens. But until that time, I think we need to continue on course, while we pay the man the money here.
My thoughts are, I never thought about dis-incorporation of Dune City, it's never even entered my mind. My concern was, how do we, what money, if we didn't get the taxes and we were going to lose the $110,000, how do we still make Dune City work? Dis-incorporating wasn't even in my spotlight anywhere. I learned new information at the Budget Committee that concerned me. I thought that we were, in fact, it was gone, and from what I've learned at the Budget Committee, it in fact isn't a done deal that it's gone, that we probably will still receive those funds. However, because of the wording on the form that Jamie got, I would like to have an executive session that has nothing to do with dis-incorporation or really about the budget, but how far out is the council? How, what's the word, for?
Libel?
Libel. How liable are we to continue to receive those funds when we've, you know, here in public meeting, we've been notified that we're not supposed to get those funds without a tax base? So, I think we should have a discussion on that, you know, in an executive session, I think.
Okay.
I think I agree with everything that's been said, but it still seems like we're skating on some pretty thin ice. If we're doing something that is maybe just barely under the line, I am not real comfortable with that. So, I think that maybe an executive session or a special session, I'm not as concerned about it being an executive session. I would like to have the public know what we're finding out and what we're thinking about. I don't think I have anything to hide.
No.
And I don't, you know, I'm not saying that that's what an executive session is about, but I think possibly the better we define and describe and ferret out what, you know, information we need to have would be a benefit to everyone in the city. I was very disappointed that we didn't get our tax base, because that would have eliminated any concern for me, because of my understanding that in order to receive the state funds, we need to have a property tax. And so, I don't know the answer to that. I'm not saying that I don't agree with Ross, but I think it's 50/50 for me. You know, I don't know if we're headed down the right road or whether we're tiptoeing down the wrong road. So, I'd be more than happy to have another meeting. I mean, yes, we only have three or four months. Let's represent the people. Yes, Jamie?
I think maybe Ross should be given an opportunity, or do you feel comfortable with the way it's been represented? Do you want to explain what you were saying about how the onus is actually on them, the way you read it?
Well, you know, I guess I can address, I feel comfortable right now in open session talking about the concerns of Councilor Wells. And it is my opinion that the city faces no liability in continuing course with what it's been doing for the past several decades, and that the onus is on the state, it's their formula, it's their statute, it's a direction upon them on how they distribute the money. And they write us a check, and I think we are entitled to accept that check. So, I firmly believe that there is no city liability at issue here, and there's no personal liability upon the council here. So, I'm pretty confident in that point. You know, I will piggyback on the last comment, having a tax base is, you know, the real solution. Because what we're in now, now we know that we're kind of in a year-to-year thing. You know, so every year we get a check or every quarter we get a check, that's great. But when the checks stop, what is our recourse? Probably not a lot. And then we have to, you know, immediately change course, trim the budget, and figure out how to survive as a city. So, you know, the real long-term solution is either the adoption of a permanent tax rate, and that's the ultimate long-term solution, or every five years, doing a local option levy where you ask for just a little bit. And that would be your five-year long-term solution. So, you know, that is absolutely the solution. But I'm also saying that what you have now is lawful, is what I'm saying.
And another comment that came up earlier was about not having the education to the community to let everybody know what the situation was. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what you advised us before was, once the matter was referred to the ballot, we as a city weren't allowed to talk about it. We were allowed to go out and lobby and take action. Yes, I did newsletter articles, but I didn't say anything more than what was going to be printed in the ballot anyway, in the ballot flyers. So, I just want to make that point, that that was the understanding that we had, that we couldn't go out. And I didn't have any organizations coming forward and saying, "Well, we'll carry the water for you, you know, we'll go do this."
If I might say something to that, because I've learned some things since we decided to put this on ballot, as a result of the work that I've been doing with the SciEsla School District and the bond issue. And what I learned is that, well, the school board and the advisory committee were not permitted to do any advocacy, it was permissible for a political action committee to be formed, which could then perform advocacy function. And in retrospect, I would think that maybe had that been done, and it doesn't take money, really, to form a political action committee, but enough perhaps to do a flyer or two and alert the citizens, we were certainly not, I know that I've heard from people, that some people thought this was an effort to get our foot in the door and then we could expand on the property tax later. That was certainly not the intent, we were simply trying to do something that would allow us to keep the revenue, the shared revenue that we were getting. So, I think if this issue was to come up again, I think I would recommend that there be some form of committee that could then explain to the voters what it was that we were trying to do and why. And I think that might make for a lot more clarity, but at this point, we didn't, and that's water under the bridge, happily, we believe that the revenue will continue and that this will not be an issue at the present time. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just dovetail on what Councilor Orr was saying, and to clarify, in order for a group of citizens to spend money, yeah, a PAC is required, but you as individual city councilors, there's no restriction on you, quote-unquote, campaigning for a measure. So, you can be out with a sign, you can be knocking doors and educating the public on even campaigning for or against a measure as individuals. The prohibition that Jamie is talking about is spending city money. So, we can't have you at the city copier, making flyers, using city equipment, using city staff to campaign. But you as individual, you're elected officials, I mean, you're politicians, so that's what you do. So, you're allowed to be politicians for a city measure and campaign in favor of something.
I didn't understand that earlier, and I'm not sure others did, but thank you for clarifying.
I mean, being called a politician, I didn't call you anything.
Susan?
I guess the thing that really bothers me about this issue is that it leaves us in the know. And because we never know, we can turn the paperwork and get it turned down. It doesn't mean it's guaranteed money. And yet, I heard that said, you know, somebody says we can continue getting the money. We might not continue getting the money.
Agreed.
It seems like it needs to be fixed, and it needs to be fixed at the state level. And I don't know if that's our job, but to follow up, play it as best we can.
Maybe the last thing I would say, that if the state does stop sending us that money, I would be prepared to challenge them at a city level. You know, I would want to call them on the table and have a judge or a board that we could sit down with, tell us that we are not providing that after 55 years.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Anything further? I would like to suggest that we set up a special session, because I would like to go through the whole process, I would like citizen input that's more lengthy than what we're allowed here, and so that we can, I mean, there's, the one thing I've found over the years in diffi- we can, I mean, there's, the one thing I've found over the years in different positions is that there's a lot of talent out in your community. And until we find a way to draw that talent in and get that information in a way that we're allowed to with more than a three-minute conversation, I would really like to encourage us having a special session. Get some, you know, in-depth input from folks, so that we can get a better understanding of what we're trying to do. One of the things we didn't talk about was the ballot measure that we had regarding changing the city charter, which in my mind shouldn't have been an issue whatsoever, but as it did in the past, without some lengthy issues, without having the enforcement of court, many of our city ordinances are basically unenforceable. I mean, if we write somebody a citation, and it's only because they're willing to pay it, that's fine, but if we don't have some other course of action, whether it be in a courtroom, a small appliance store, or what have you, or putting a lien on their property, it's not going to get paid. We have tons of outstanding ones. So that's another problem with being a city, is if we can't truly enforce all of our codes to the point of doing that, then we've got an issue as well. That just, it doesn't make sense to me that we have ordinance, somebody's breaking that ordinance, we write a citation, and they go, well, that's nice. And, you know, it never gets resolved. We've got some that are years old, understanding. So I think we can roll that into that topic as well, I think. So that's kind of like I would like to have a special session, if you folks don't mind, setting one up and seeing how many people we can get in and have these conversations.
Sure.
Next topic, outlet control structure insurance coverage. Jamie?
The outlet control structure at Wohang Lake, we have an easement to. We still don't have actual ownership, but should the structure fail, it's going to fall on us to repair it. And so our insurance agent just wants to know, do we want him to look at how much of a cost to cover the outlet control structure?
That's a question? I mean...
I mean, we have not paid for it up till now.
You mean, we have not insured it?
We have not insured it, yes. We have insured it up till now, although Dune City did in the past do repairs to it.
Right, we've maintained it.
When it failed, yes, we haven't maintained it, so.
But Jamie, wasn't that on city property at one time, and now it's...
No.
None?
No, it's never been owned by the city. It has always been in private ownership.
Okay.
But with an easement?
Well, we just recently got the easement, and I am in the process. The deed is in the hands of the individuals, and hopefully we will get it signed, and then we will have ownership of it. In the meantime, do we want to insure it? And that's what our, I mean, he's in the process of calculating our premiums for the coming year and...
Well, I think that will matter a lot to my decision on what that premium is.
Yeah.
Is there liability insurance on that?
No, there's not.
Nothing?
Nothing.
I don't know that I could have that conversation without knowing what the price tag is, you know?
Is that what you're asking, is whether we should proceed to find out?
Yeah, whether he wants, it's going to take him some time to determine what the price tag will be. There's a lot of effort in that. Do you want him to move forward with that?
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's all I need.
All right. Western Lane Emergency Operations Group.
Rules of procedure.
Yep.
They were distributed at the October meeting, they were in your pack at this time. West Lane Emergency Group asked each of its signature parties to review those rules of procedure and vote on whether they're acceptable.
Comments on that? No? They seem comprehensive. What do you need from us?
Accept a motion to...
To?
...up for agreement.
What's the signature level? Can you sign?
I don't think I signed, I don't think anybody signed on it, did they?
It would be hard to, you know, agree to a ruling and give a motion, and there's no signature.
It's just rules of procedure. There's a signature, but just saying that, yes, they did not.
Okay, if it's an acknowledgement, then please acknowledge it, because we've all added in our packet, we've had time to read it. We have no objections to it. Resolution 10, Series 2018, approving entire intergovernmental agreement, participation with Western Lane.
Was there a motion that I missed?
We just agreed to...
Just to buy consensus?
Yes, it's in our packet. We're agreeing. No, there were no objections to it.
Resolution 10 is actually the intergovernmental agreement for West Lane Emergency Operations Group. Relatively few changes, mostly the changes to the agreement or updates to current procedures, current officials, and that kind of clarification.
Anybody have any concerns on the new resolution? Are the updates to it? Okay, all in favor of accepting the new updates?
Motion.
Huh?
Motion.
Yeah, anybody got a motion here? All right, any conversation? None, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, it's approved.
Hit the post?
Water Quality Committee?
Do you need to know who the, was there a second on that motion?
Your general.
Thank you.
Appointment of applications to the Water Quality Committee?
There are three applications to serve on the water quality, as water quality committee testers. Those applications should be in your packets. Andy Serrano, Bill Schors, and Keith, I believe, yeah, Keith was here. Housekeeping, actually, because they've been serving anyway.
Just, yeah, I could... No, that's... Any of the motion or...
That's please.
So we'll accept a second. All in favor of accepting the applications to the Water Committee? All right. Any opposed? And those that you applied, you can't oppose it. Motion is, motion's approved. Andy, Bill, and Keith are accepted. How long have they been on it?
Andy, Bill, and Keith? Andy and Bill are brand-new.
Brand-new, and then...
Because the Serranos just moved here not very long ago.
Oh.
This is your, yeah.
May I just add, with the thanks of the council for their willingness to perform this on behalf of the city?
Volunteers of all kinds, I...
Yeah.
We appreciate it. Blue-green algae tests, kids.
The, we've learned something with the latest blue-green algae, going on Silkus. The only time the state is taking, is doing a requirement testing is for drinking water systems. As a matter of fact, they have new proposed regulations that are going to require drinking water systems that serve whatever the state law is for the number, to test periodically throughout the year and report those tests to the state. Now, that having been said, in Dune City, we had one drinking water system that was taken out of Silkus, that was South Coast Water District, and now they're taking out of Wohang.
Right.
So they will no longer be testing. As a result of that concern, the water testers, the Water Quality Committee asked if perhaps the city would consider purchasing its own test kits to keep one on hand in case we need it. The test kit itself is about $420. It costs another $280, I believe it is, to have it processed when you send it in. And so I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know what their shelf life is, I'm going to have to do some research on that. But we do know that Boy Scout camp will continue to test. They're considered a drinking water system, so they will continue to test, but only if it happens to turn up in one of their tests. Otherwise, if we see blue-green on the lake, like our testers see, there is no one. Call DEQ, they don't care, nobody cares. They won't come out and test.
I think it's a reasonable price, and I think it's something if we're going to have water testers out there, that makes sense if they have the equipment to do what we need to do.
It's just one more thing, yeah.
Yeah.
But I will check on the shelf life, because we've had a bunch of tests, and they all went bad.
Yeah. Otherwise, it might, I don't know how long it takes to actually get one of those kits, but it might, if it has a short shelf life, then we should probably purchase one as needed. But if we can keep it and make use of it, I think that's a great idea.
And quite honestly, as long as all of those, I believe, what is your signature level, $500 when you're purchasing things like that, that you can...
$200.
$200. Well, I'm thinking that the kid is one thing, and that probably the chemicals in it and things has to be replaced, so as long as it's under that, as long as it's within your purchasing authority, I don't think it's necessary to ask us.
All right. Thank you.
Sustainable City, your program requests for participation.
The city, in your packet, there's a flyer about what is SCYP, Sustainable Cities. We were approached by the University of Oregon to participate in a program where 12 of the classes get together. There would be the classes on architects, the engineers, all these different landscapers, there's all these different classes that have now combined together, and they've been going to different cities and helping those cities develop a plan for a project that the city wanted to accomplish. And their focus this year is on passive energy. So that we were approached, they want to find a city on the coast to work with. They came out, we did some tours, we talked about some possibilities. I mentioned the fact that we would like to have some, what do you call it, temperature-controlled storage for our emergency supplies across the street and all these other things. And so they got really excited about it. They're building their program for the coming, for the spring session on helping Dune City and getting their students together. At first, they said there would be no monetary contribution. Now the monetary contribution would be any money that would come up to help with grant funding for, match for grant. And of course, any of those grants also would have an element of volunteer participation that could be offset as well. Anyway, really excited about this, they're putting it together. I was a little worried with the recent discussion about whether or not the city was going to continue, whether to push the button on it and have them move forward. She emailed today, they're anxious, they've got the professors lined up, they've got the students lined up, they're all ready to go. And so I'm excited to say that I'm going, if it's all right with you, I will call them. Basically, what we'll end up with is a product on about three different projects, where they give us what we need in order to apply for a grant, to do whatever we need to do, and they're going to help us write grants in the meantime, and help me for all this.
Sounds like a good deal.
Yeah, sure does.
That's what I'm excited about it. Fun work though, too.
Do you need action on that?
I don't think so, because there's no expenditure or anything. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware it's okay with you.
Great.
Full business, animal control IGA.
Really full business. We've had another complaint, but I've told them that there was nothing we could do about it. This item has been put off numerous times, discussed, additional information requested, and I think I have now given everybody everything that they asked for. The existing county code is in your packet, our existing code, I think, is in your packets, and the proposed ordinance. Well, no, we have no existing code now, if you guys are...
No, we have no existing code.
Okay, so what's there is the proposed code, the county existing code, and a draft IGA.
Who wants to go first?
Uh, well, we already voted on this issue, and it keeps coming up, and it's almost getting irritating. I understand if we get complaints, we have to respond. I just got my tax bill, and I about had a stroke. We pay for animal control through our taxes, is my opinion. And I, we don't need any more expense, we don't have the manpower, we don't have the facilities, we don't have a truck to go and get dogs, and on my forest does. Well, they have an officer that does animal control, he's also the code enforcement guy. And, you know, we have codes to get into the shelter, to place the dogs, et cetera. But the point is, we don't have the manpower to do it, first point. Second point is, we already pay for it through Wayne County. And granted, we get no help, definitely not in law enforcement, and not in this issue, apparently, from Wayne County, but I think that's the answer that we have to give to the state. We don't have the horsepower to do it.
Ma'am? First, as a point of order, I want to point out that the vote has never been against, it was a defaced adoption with, we need further information, so I've been providing further information. That's why it keeps coming back, it keeps getting tabled. Secondly, in order to get the county, they were very clear in their letter, if you want the county to do it, they're not objecting to do it, they just need the IGA. And the IGA requires that we adopt their code so that our code says same thing as their code, so that they don't have to end up fighting, conflicting, cutting. So that's why that's here. With it, I don't care, there's nothing that we do other than call county.
Except they want paid for it.
On as-needed basis.
Right. Tom's concern is that everybody in this room has already paid the county for that.
That's fine, put it down, that would be fine. I just need a final on it, so I can get it off my list of things to do and take it off the bull setting list.
My point to the council is that, you know, Tom is saying that, you know, every citizen here is paying for it already, and we're not receiving the service very much like we don't in law enforcement. And you think it would benefit, does this IGA benefit the citizenry any more than, you know, than not having it or dealing with the county directly? Tom? I mean, I'm sorry, Bob?
It strikes me that adopting the IGA allows us, then, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, allows us to take advantage of the county's services, and I don't see a downside. I don't see that there is added cost, but you can again correct me if I'm wrong. I think in fact that the cost is the county's cost. We simply have to sign the paperwork and say, we're on board. Now, please do what we want you to do because we're paying for it, to the county. But am I missing something, Jamie?
Did you read the agreement?
I have not, not, it's been a while.
It was a draft, and I don't know if it left it blank.
I know it's here, and I didn't get to it before this meeting, so...
I was under the impression it would be on an as-needed basis, but state law does require, whereas if it doesn't have code, they're supposed to.
does require where, so if it doesn't have code, they're supposed to. And so, and they're saying that they have to have the IGA, and that because they don't want the conflict with code. That's the main reason for that, is they don't want our code to be different from theirs, and then all of a sudden they have an issue where they're trying to remember two different codes and where they are, and all that. I get that. I understood originally our request was can we do something on an as-needed basis, where we just pay if we have a call? But I didn't, I don't know if that's what the agreement reads like. I'm with you, it's been nine months or something.
Yeah, exactly.
I think my concern with it before was twofold. One, we were required to pay for an officer to come from Eugene to take on the concern and make sure there was a violation, and that we were to pay them per hour from the point that that person left Eugene until they returned back, and I believe the verbiage was till they were back in duty. And so we're going to pay to and from transportation plus a minimal fee, and it was like $165 plus an hour, you know? So, I mean, that was my concern, and I'm sure fits into Tom's concern as well.
And should we wish to enforce the payment of that from someone who violated the rules? We don't at present time have the judicial court.
No, it'd have to be out of the county, because we could. So people need to work it out between themselves, the dog owner, as well as the person complaining. And I know that's hard when you get the phone call and somebody complains, but that's all we can do at this point. Lane County, it needs to handle if there's an issue. We pay for it, but we pay for law enforcement too, but we don't get that.
Could, and I know Jamie wants to get this off the table, but if, and I have volunteer time that I have trouble finding, but I will make a point of it. If you and I could sit down and come up with, if a proposal that this council could accept that would allow us to have, and I, where I think I differ with Tom is I don't think people are always going to be able to work it out. And I think we need to have something that you can point to if you get a phone call. And so I'm interested in trying to find a way to create something that the council can support without, and I don't know, giving the cost of getting an officer out here, I don't know. But I would love to see if we could work this out somehow, so that we have.
If I may.
Somebody pointed, yeah.
The only way I can't handle it, because I am the code enforcement officer, is if the dog is being vicious and attacking. And that would be the only time that I would want help. Other than that, you talk to the neighbors, most of the time, nine times out of 10, it all gets taken care of. Usually, it's because somebody's letting their dog run loose in the neighborhood. I mean, that's always the big problem. You talk to them about it, and most of the time they lock them out. Not always. But it's the vicious ones that I worry about, which would be the only time I would call anybody in. And maybe they'll call Duke first, because he's closest. Anyway, it's whatever you guys want to do, it doesn't matter. I know from here on out, you told me point blank, when I got attacked by those dogs, that I could shoot to kill. You gave me permission that day. I don't know whether it's legal or not, but you told me I could. And the person whose dog they belonged to heard you say it, and I haven't been bothered by those dogs again.
Gentlemen, what's your thoughts? We've been yelling at this for months.
I know. If adopting the ordinance would allow us to activate the Lane County to get what services we're already paying for, I think that would make sense to do that. And I do think that it would be, the understanding would be, is that it's on an as-needed basis. If we need to have somebody come over and take care of a vicious animal, we need to have somebody come over and take care of a vicious animal, period. And it shouldn't be you, and I don't want to do it. And if Bob wants to work on some language that is a little more palatable to the rest of us, that'd be fine. But if all we have to do is pass this thing, and then Lane County's going to do what they're getting paid to do, to me, that's a no-brainer.
We don't need to continue to pay them with these special fees that they want. I guess that's my point. You know, maybe the complainant should pay the fee. Lacking that, I'm not comfortable in approving.
Fees, the other thing that concerns me is, you know, here we go again, paying twice. When the sheriff came out and wanted us to pay more for them to do their job. Susan, what do you think?
That's my concern also. I'm not going to vote for anything that compuses anymore, because I still feel we're in limbo on whether or not, what money we're going to have for a budget, so I'm not willing for anything.
That's where I'm at, exactly. We're not sure what money we've got. I don't remember the exact number per hour rate from Eugene to here to back Eugene, but it was substantial. And I just don't want to take that on right now.
Why don't I make a suggestion? Why don't we, why don't we make a suggestion that, Bob, if you and Jamie can work out something with the county as far as their financial? Because I don't have a problem with the process, I have a problem with the money, and I have a problem paying them again.
And I do want to make a correction, that we do have responsible law enforcement in this community. I called Florence the other day, and they referred me to the county, and there, within a half an hour, there was a county sheriff there and a state police there.
Good.
Somebody get murdered?
I thought maybe had been.
Really? It was a serious issue?
It was a serious issue. I heard a gunshot, I couldn't arouse somebody, and I was concerned. So they do respond.
Good.
Are we all good with that suggestion?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Adoption of Thor Plan Management Regulation.
This is on the agenda because you asked me to find out if the city could request an extension if needed, and the answer is no. There's a flyer in there that explains it.
Do not feed the deer signs?
Well.
Our deer are pretty smart, but I'm not sure they agree.
Councilor Meyer, do you want to step on this?
I have been approached by a couple of my neighbors, saying it seems like every other time they drive into town, there's a dead deer on the road out here. And maybe if we had some more signs that say, you know, beware of deer, slow down, don't run over them, you know, pretend like they're your kids, or drive like as if they were your kids, or something, some additional signage to get more people's attention. I mean, I'm almost afraid to walk outside on the street. I went out with my wife the other day, and, God, people are fast. And so I was just, I told my neighbors, I would ask to see if there was a way to get some more deer signs to make people more aware that, you know, deer have a right to live here, too.
Didn't with the county, could we only put them on city streets? We could put them out in the county.
Well, I did contact the county, and the response was they did a check, and there were no more deer till here this year than there has been any other year. I think the signage that they have is sufficient. But we happen to have approval for three signs on county roads already. They all say, welcome to Dune City, home of the Oregon Dunes Triathlon. And we can put something, and dead deer, and we can put something on those signs as long as they are our responsibility and we maintain them.
I know there's a lot of deer. I hit one myself a couple of months ago, or it hit me, I should say.
Oh, blame the deer.
It's a deer fault. So I think it's a good idea.
I would agree with that. I think it's a good idea to put some signs. Yeah, I don't know what exactly we put on. I mean, there's several ways which to go, but.
Councilor Meyer suggested keep deer deer, deer. No, and that's what'd make people think.
He's had some other crazier ideas.
Yes, he has.
A sign doesn't mean people are going to read them or pay attention to them. There's a sign one block down that says stop, that I watch every single day. People go through that sign at 35 and 40 miles an hour, and no one stops. So I do not, after seeing the sign, I do not believe that signs.
Slowly, but I always stop when I go to bed.
I watch. But I'm just saying, a sign means nothing. A sign does not mean that people are going to slow down, it doesn't mean they're going to pay more attention. It doesn't mean any of those things are going to happen.
I agree. In the aspect that, to me, if a sign's like, you know, buy a book, having a sign there is the cheapest thing you can do, and you're going to maintain it, and you're going to keep putting it up, and, you know, it's going to last, your requirement for it's going to last a long time, and the cost is going to be in there. But that's, whatever, you know, whatever the, whatever you guys think, and what the community might like to see, I, you know, I just, it actually sounds to me like the problem is feeding people, not deer.
Well, and I don't think it's the residents. I mean, and the people driving through aren't going to pay, don't pay attention to the signs that don't live here.
What do you think?
I think the complaint from someone was we do not feed the deer, and I don't know how much of a cost Jamie's, to have the three signs made and put up and. What we're allowed to do, right?
Oh, I still have to get permission to put them on there. That's what they suggested. They know that we have our, three of our own signs and.
Do you have a feel for the cost?
I think they're anywhere from $30 and $40 a piece, so.
I'd say do it.
It's a staggering.
Right.
You know, there's also an additional, my concern is that the people that are feeding the deer are also drawing in the cougars.
Oh.
And there's been a number of those sightings lately, too, more than I remember.
All right, I don't think you were here last meeting.
I wasn't.
Well, I did find out from ODFW that someone had mentioned that feeding deer means that they could, if you do that and they're well-fed, that they will have two sets of offspring in one year. And that's not really what happens. What happens is, when they're fed, and they're fed well, almost all of them will have multiple births as opposed to just single. And so you end up with more of the baby deer, which does draw a cougar, because that's their natural food source. Of course, it doesn't help that our cougar had three kids.
All right, any direction for Jamie? Wanted to move forward with signs, remember?
I'd move forward. Yeah, I think a motion to have Jamie go ahead and purchase the three signs that are allowed.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Period. Yeah, one name. Marriage report. I wasn't here last month, and I did end up with a car at the auction, so, there you go. Saved myself money. Community center, Mr. Wells.
I got the roof finished, it's ready for winter, that's all.
Great.
Water quality.
And Jamie's kind of already gone through that, so.
How it works?
We finished, the Huckleberry Lane project is finished. The final report has been submitted to the state, and now we're just waiting for the check to be cut. We also applied for grant funding for two more projects. They expanded the small cities grant, transportation grants to, we can have two at a time now instead of just one. So I made application for Alder Drive, where it's caving off, falling off into the lake, and, well, not the lake, there's probably before, I guess, the lake. And for Parkway Drive, where I call it, so the Caribbean Hill on Parkway Drive, down the bottom, the whole thing is sliding into the culvert there, so. And I hear from the state that that, the Parkway Drive project is actually rated higher than the other one, because it serves more people. So we'll see, but we'll see.
Emergency service?
We did the things that we really needed to do to not open the report, but make sure we're not missing anything else. Nope, that's it. The annual expo will be March 30th, and there will be a communications test the last week of April 2019. And the entire state is pushing retrofit for houses and encourages communities to do the same. Linda Cook has taken a different position with Lane County. She's no longer emergency manager. She will be in the position of public affairs.
Grant writing for the county.
Grant writing for the county. Right, but she emailed me the other day, anyway. So that position is open, over at the county, they're trying to fill it out for emergency manager. And that's it. The next meeting, we'll have a meeting will be Monday, November 12. About 10, or anybody's welcome to come. Ready for my report?
Yep.
Twelve building permits issued in October, two structural, five electrical, three mechanical, two plumbing, and one was a new building started. Also issued for two driveway permits and one grading permit. The planning commission, acting as a citizen advisory committee, is, and there are openings on the CAC, so anybody who wants to volunteer, provide input.
It's a fun group.
Yeah, it's a fun group. Come on down. So they began their review of the flood insurance provisions, and they've moved that along. The state formally adopted the city's water conservation management plan this month, and the annual water use report was submitted to the state on time for the first time in years. I told you about Blue Green Algebra. We have not received a telephone franchise fee from Quest this year, and normally we do get our Quest fee by March. Quest was purchased by CenturyLink and later sold to Verizon, at least I think that's what happened. So that's why I mentioned it in the budget committee, referred that to our attorneys, and they're tracking that down. We are required to report a bridge and roadway condition report to the state by February 1, 2019. However, the only roadway mileage, if we don't have any federally funded roads, we don't report the mileage, so, and we don't, I saw the report, the mileage is a zero, but it's not a major deal. It's not like I've got to report on the condition. So that one's not too bad. I submitted the state's request for our mileage today. I finished that up today. We did have a threat and complaint, a complaint and threat of a lawsuit on another issue involving drainage, because that seems to be our favorite issue to get sued over. He claims that he's been trying to get the city to fix the issue for over 40 years. I have to admit, I did find a letter, the earliest letter I could find was dated 1995, and he has been asking since 1995. So I sent Richard over there. Richard's kind of waiting. We can see what the problem is. Two driveways were put in in such a way that they slant and put the water onto the roadway. This gentleman lives down the hill, it goes onto the road and straight down the hill into his garage. So I put Richard on it. He wants to see what the rain does in a heavy rain, and there hasn't been a rain that's been heavy enough to really figure out what it is, but I suspect there will be some, something similar along the lines with what we did, either at Darling's or at Kefina. And hopefully we'll get him happy, make somebody happy. And that's all I have.
Good of the order.
I'd just like to thank Ross for coming tonight. It was extremely helpful to have your wise counsel, and we appreciate you making the trip. Thank you very much.
Tom?
I'm good.
Two things I'd like to make clear. When I came to budget, I was, with the package not passing from the taxes, I was under the assumption that we were not going to get that money. I was wrong. It sounded like that money is still going to be coming our way. But, you know, I came ready, well, they're ready to fight for that money because we've been, we do provide services. We've been getting it for 55 years, and I thought we could, would win on standing in that ground. Second thing I'd like to say is thank the citizens of Dune City for electing me to council so I can serve again. It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Sheldon?
I would also like to thank the citizens of Dune City for re-electing me, which that might have been. Thank you. And watch for the deer on the way home, Ross.
Susan?
I would also like to thank citizens for electing me for the first time because this is your first chance to elect me. Thank you very much.
Couple things. Thank you for the election, but a bit disheartened that we didn't have more people running for the open seats. I know some of the folks in the community have been here a long time and have sat up here and have been on committees and stuff. And I would really, really encourage you, if you have not, please get involved. We, you know, there's only a few of us, and there's, we can only talk to so many people. And we really need people's input. I'd really like to see new people get involved as often as possible. And as, as you can, please give us your time. It's really important. It's really, and it's so much in a small city. Yeah, I know it's hard to get volunteers even in larger cities, but it's so critical here with the small population that we have. Another thing that I would like to bring up, and I think it's a good time to here to do so, Jamie, is we need to get, I believe we need to get Jay Bojovic involved. We, not to be rude, but we see Jay when it's election time. But at the same time, you and I have experienced meetings with county engineers on our property that's being affected by, by Lane County's engineering of their roads and their drainage. And we literally have been told by Lane County that we don't have money, so you need to sue us. And here we're getting into another rainy season, and they still haven't done anything. So my opinion is that we take their, you know, we take their suggestion. But I would like to have him bring it up to Lane County before we take further action. Keecy Lee Arms was an issue, several places over off of Darling's Loop, where they have, they built Clear Lake Road and put culverts for drainage right down onto city and private streets that have no ditches or drainage. The water coming down those streets is there directed by Lane County's engineers. It irritates me every year when this comes up, and even more once we were told what we were told. So I think it's a topic, that the timing is good. Luckily, we've had a kind of a dry fall so far. But it's going to be a long, Ross is sitting there going, "No, we don't want to do this." It's, it's a long, it's been a long time coming. And I think we need to get into the county and get some serious conversations about, you know, their intent, what they can do, and why should, why they're allowed to, you know, run their ditches right down onto our properties. And I think it's a good time to do that on the board. Anything else? Anybody? Jamie? Ross? Rapunzel? Nothing?
Well, like the essential workshops training for, it's time for our pressure course, boys and girls.
Oh, good. All right. With that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you at 7:16. Hold you, boss.
Good job. On my way. Thank you.